I'd like to call the special meeting of the North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission to order. In attendance at tonight's meeting, our regular members, Sienna, Leskewitz, Gunn, and Dulek. Our first order of business will be reviewing the meeting minutes from January 23rd. Which, Ron, you weren't here for that, correct?
Twenty-second, sorry.
Oops. I'm sorry. Meeting minutes from January 22nd. Everybody got a copy of that in our little packet? So if you want to take a moment to look at that?
I'm moved to accept them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes three to zero. They never, Carol never resigns stuff.
Sorry.
She knows that I never sign anything. Oh, right on that. Alright. Next order of business is the continuation of a public hearing for PZ application 2014-15-5. So where I think we left off was that, to use the, the regulation was a little clunky, so you're going to be working to kind of streamline it a little bit, and...
Yes, and Carrie, I think, proposed something that is not only more streamlined, but she peeled it apart into stages, why don't I say that, to make it easier to understand from one step to the next what it might be doing.
So, that's something that I just passed out this evening. It's different than what was in your packet. This shows three different options, and I put in bold the changes from the original regulations. So, in the first one, the general section remains the same, which is where there was some confusion last time, so it talks about that the regulation would regulate consumption on or off premises. The measurement, the changes are just capitalizing L in liquor and O in outlet, and then changing and adding in that the measurement would be made from the parcel boundary of a school building, as well as, before it just said park or town-owned playground boundary, so now it would say school building, park or town-owned playground parcel boundary.
Because it says nearest corner.
So, right, so...
Are you talking about nearest, yeah, but, oh, we got that.
The original regulation measured from the nearest corner of the church synagogue college or school building. And now it has, from the nearest, I should add another or, to the nearest corner of any church synagogue or college building or school, park or town-owned playground parcel boundary.
Okay, so for the first part, it's actually from the physical structure.
Correct.
From the other parts, it's actually from the closest...
Boundary, parcel boundary.
Yep, alright.
And the thinking behind that is that most schools have playground. So it was a question of, how do you differentiate, do you measure from the, if a school grounds has a playground, do you measure from the school building, or do you measure from the parcel boundary? Because it has multiple uses.
Okay.
So here, it's just more...
Yes, if it's just a school building, it's from the actual physical structure. If it's a park or town, a playground, it would be from the closest boundary.
No, this includes school building as the boundary. It would be measured from the boundary of the school, because schools have parks and playgrounds.
I got you, so everything after the or is the boundary?
Yes.
School building, park, or town-owned playground parcel, and that's the parcel boundary. Any church synagogue or college is actually from physical structure?
Yes.
Okay.
So after, so it should say nearest corner of any church synagogue or college building or school building, park or town-owned playground parcel boundary.
Okay.
We can...
We can clean it up.
We can clean it up, but the intent is to measure from the boundary of the school premises.
Yep. Alright.
And then, the addition of the straight line measurement, the next section talks about the capitalization of the liquor outlet, and then the valid existing permit, that's something that the board can discuss. That was something that Attorney Pastor added, just had clarifying that it's a valid existing permit. I don't know if the commission wants more explanation about that, but that was just something that, one option is to leave that in, or you could, the original version just has a permit, not the valid existing permit.
Well, as we're going through the options, would the commission want to, you know, clarify any points as we go through with the attorney? Or you want to wait till the end to go through them?
See if anybody has comments on each other, and then later, we can discuss it ourselves.
Sure.
Hold on a second.
Yeah, I think we could hear any other comments people have on the regulations, and then close the hearing, and then later on, we can discuss whichever one looks like it's the best one in detail.
Right. Now, with the vow, could you clarify what are, a little more clarity around the valid existing permit versus...
You have to say, if an existing liquor outlet which shall be located within the prescribed distance. A liquor outlet, at least under this regulation, requires a permit. There's no other thing that exists without a permit, so that just clarifies that the liquor outlet and the permit go together. So, it's just a clarification that in order to be one, you have to be the other.
Mrs. and, excuse me, still looking at option number one, the location, in bold, there was the addition that Attorney Pastor recommended, the 500 foot, except when a highway separates the liquor outlet from any church synagogue college school park or town playground, then the required separating distance shall be reduced to 400 feet. And then, the last section keeps in the 1500 feet from establishment, same class permit.
Now, on that, when you say no liquor outlet, that is off premises.
That would include, in this particular version that you're looking at tonight...
Yep.
...which is a little bit different than what we had here, but if you were going to assume that this was going to be your operative document, that would mean any place that is serving liquor, on or off premises, that's what your definition is now, in this particular version. You've taken on premises, which is, let's just call it restaurants for room, and off premises together. So that means, in 54.42, the way this is written, there's 1500 feet between anybody who's serving liquor, at a restaurant or a liquor store. That's version one now, proposed by the plan. It's just, you know, she's peeling this like an onion.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yep.
So then, if everyone's okay, we'll move to option two. So, looking at that. So I built on option one, so the changes are the same as option two, except I added on the exemption under location, that the 1500 foot requirement is only for consumption off premises. And then, I add a sentence at the end, that says, "There is no required separation distance for establishments where alcoholic liquor wine beer and/or ale is sold at retail for consumption on premises."
So basically, any restaurant, bar...
Cafe permit, all of those permits could be next to each other.
Okay.
And then, we add option three. Again, the same as option one and two, except going down towards the bottom of the page, 54.4.3 under location, this talks about, it says the location requirements set out in 54.1, excuse me, 54.4.1, which is the 500 foot, except when a highway separates the liquor outlet from a church synagogue college school park etc., it's reduced to 400 feet. And also, the 1500 foot rule, that shall not apply to a liquor outlet in a retail commercial center that contains a building 14,000 gross square feet on the first floor or greater. So if there's a building that's 14,000 gross square feet on the first floor or larger, they can be located next to a church, next to a school, anywhere, the location would not apply. They could also be located next to a restaurant that serves alcohol, there also could be two package stores next to one another. On 54.5, relocation, this talks about that anyone with a valid existing permit, again, for consumption on or off site, if they relocate within 1500 feet of the front door of their prior location, the location requirements shall not apply. So they wouldn't have to comply with the 500 foot requirement or the 1500 foot requirement.
Just for the record, now seated is, I'm sorry?
Dick Holken.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Dick Holken.
Yeah, yes. Alternative member, Holken, is now seated.
So, just to expand on this, so these are, these are only three options, there are many more options than this, meaning you could, the commission can take or leave, you know, any one of these or all of them. It doesn't have to be these combinations, but these were the three that I came up with based on our previous meetings. And also, I know that it's a little confusing because we have two separate applications that are talking about the same regulations. It did not include Mr. Del Vecchio's option in here, but that is another option, it could be included in any of these, which is a deletion of the 1500 foot rule. So I just decided...
Just as a technical matter, this particular application, 2014-15-5, doesn't actually deal with that, so it could be discussed here, it could be part of a global solution, but that's not actually part of this application, we have to be voted on in a separate...
Well, we can amend, we can amend any of the regulation, if we want, you know, to include that we...
Yes.
Thank you. Just for, just to clarify, as far as timing goes, so tonight is the last night that the public hearing could be held, so we have to close the hearing.
Correct.
And then, how long do we have to act on it, if we decide that we need more time, or if more time is needed, so we can take a look at the options and come together?
Sixty-five days.
Okay.
Which is until April...
Okay, just in case, you know, because there's a lot of information here, and we'll update it with the rest of the commission and see how we want, we'd want to handle that, so...
So, but you're right, we would have to close the public hearing this evening, because the deadline for closing the public hearing is February 12th, which is a week from today. So unless the commission decided to have a special hearing, special meeting...
No, I don't think we would plan on that. Is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I agree with the state for the chairman, that this is a, this is a suggestion for changes. This can be modified based upon testimony, based upon discussion that this commission has. I don't want to leave you with the idea that you have to take that how it's written or not.
Okay. What I would like to ask you, since you brought this application to the town, to this commission, maybe you can give us some, what you think are the benefits of these options?
Sure.
You know, I'm sure you have, you might have one that particularly is, you know, you think it might be better suited, I'd just like to hear your take on that. I think Carrie did a really good job providing a number of different options.
I agree.
But I'd just like to get, you know, your input on these options as well.
Sure. You know, I, as part of this proposal, went through the Plan of Conservation and Development that this particular commission approved and has to approve every 10 years under state statute. That is sort of, I'll call it a planning guideline for the town. How do you conserve things in the town? And how do you have development that's going to be consistent with the town? This town is a very unique place, because it's extremely narrow, and it's extremely long. There's not another town along the shoreline that I know of that is developed in this way. It's very, very narrow, and it has concentrated centers of commercial activity, surrounded by profound residential and agricultural land. That's a benefit to this town. That planning document, the Plan of Conservation and Development, speaks to how do we exploit the commercial centers that we have, without making commercial sprawl, in other words, without getting that commercial stuff to go into all these other beautiful areas that we have? So, this allows for a little bit more activity in the developed areas, without impacting all of the other beautiful areas that you want to keep, in a way, in essence, conserved. You want to keep those things residential or agricultural, they bring a lot to the way this town functions, they have a large degree affecting the livability of this town, and those are things that are precious, you shouldn't be disturbed. You already have commercial centers, let's see what we can do with those. So, by allowing, you know, the churches that are developed in town, they're old churches, they've been here for a very, very long time, and the town has sort of grown up around them. And I respect the idea that there should be some kind of separation from that type of a use, it's not a bad planning tool. But that has to be balanced with the town's need to conserve what they have, to exploit to a certain degree their commercial centers and leave the rest alone. So there has to be some balance, and I think that on 54.4.1, you know, when you say that there's a state highway that runs between parcels, between a church and on the other side of the street, I think that's a, the state highway in the north of South is a giant divider. You know, very few people walk around town today. You know, it's one thing to walk in downtown Haven or in downtown Madison, where, you know, there's a place to walk, there's a street front, there's something to walk along and see and do, that's very difficult to do in, like, you know, if I was at Dairy Queen and I wanted to walk down the street to the church or to the library over there, boy, that would be an undertaking, you know, just to get across that road and get down on the side of the road. So I think that the state highway idea is a nice separator, because it is a profound divider. So if you just ease that up just a little bit, you could allow for a lot more uses without a very big impact. With regard to the on-premises consumption, I think for sure, that would be a way to open up a lot more viability for the commercial centers. It really, I'm not going to say that makes no sense, but it doesn't make planning sense if you're trying to control commercial versus residential and sprawl, to have that kind of a separation for on-site consumption. So I think that should be included. You know, the 1400 square foot, I'll call it a shopping center, commercial center, you know, you have, you have three of those in town. They should be, they should be utilized to their fullest, they're large, there's probably not going to be another one in town, not for the foreseeable future, the land just doesn't exist. You know, so there's a chance to concentrate things there. Now, I understand that some members of this commission and some members of the public felt, you know, if you're in a 14,000 gross square foot area, and you're too close to the church, you know, maybe that's going to be an issue. You know, that can be massaged a little bit, you know, through something like 54.4.1, but I think that you should seriously consider the 14,000 square foot center as being something that you'd like to concentrate some uses in.
Also, you know, you're talking about like walking, if you were a Dairy Queen, when you looked at this regulation and made these recommendations, do you take in consideration the redevelopment of the old town hall?
Yes, Carrie and I spent, I'm going to say we spent two and a half hours at the town's GIS system that you have here, it's a nice system, because there's a tool, there's a measuring tool. You can go to any parcel in town, you can draw the line and measure to something else. And we took a very good look at all of those areas, and Carrie specifically spoke about the redevelopment of that area. And actually, the redevelopment of this particular building, you know, in the future, this isn't going to be the town forever, this should use for something else. And at least, the way that we were measuring to all the parcels, it really did not seem to be impacted. But as I said the last time, if there was a concern about that, I'll call it the baseball field parcel, you know, there are things that could be placed on the land records, the town owns that, they're in control of it, they can restrict that in any way they see fit. They could control it through lease restrictions, you know. So if that was an actual concern, rather than get at it through here, because sometimes when you're dealing with one parcel, it's difficult to do, it might be easier to just use a deed restriction or a lease restriction. Or you could even say, you could even say something like this, and I'm not advocating this, but let's just say, for this parcel, the current section 54.4.1 shall not apply. At the end, it's your parcel, you have the right to regulate the parcel how you wish.
Does anybody have any other questions for the applicant?
I have one question. And for off-premises, out-of-grocery store beer licenses, is that a similar...
That is an off-premises, yes.
Yeah, I know it's an off-premise, but is it handled just like a liquor store license, or the different categories?
That's a different category of permit. It has to go through the exact same process, and under this regulation, it would be considered an off-premises license. So it would apply to all of the regulations here with regard to off-premises.
So you could have a retail liquor store, let's say, we're bounce, right next to Big Y, because they're two different licenses?
Big Y has a grocery beer, yes.
Right.
Now, I would imagine that Big Y probably has some kind of lease restriction in there.
Well, no, I'm just saying, but so they don't, right?
Yes, that's true.
They're still, they're two distinct...
You could have, yes, you could have a liquor store next to Big Y's grocery beer permit, yes, you could.
Okay. Good question. Does anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Carrie, do you want to add to that? I'll still go up to the public, I have just...
So, two points of information that I wanted to add, is I did hear back from the police department and the town attorney regarding comments on this section. The police lieutenant, Riva, said that he's reviewed it and discussed the matter with Chief Canelli, and there are no objections by the department. And then, the town attorney, John Jezmon, just made reference to the Plan of Conservation and Development, and, you know, stated that the commission needs to make any changes to the regulations in regard to that plan.
In performance with the plan.
And, right, exactly.
Thank you.
Yes.
At this time, if any members of the public would like to speak on behalf of this application, please step up. Just state your name and your address, please.
Daniel Guld, 49 Co. Road, Durham. As a local resident, I'm a customer of the various establishments around Northford Center. Drive through there twice a day. I am here to support the continuing operations of a small business known as Village Wine and Spirits, located in Northford, Connecticut. I'm here to support the process as executed by this board, that will enable the establishment to remain a part of the greater Northford business community. I get to do that because of 169 towns in this state, 164 are below population of 10,000, and most of us operate under the old statutes of New England Town Law. And that means I have both the right and the responsibility to ask politely for statutes to protect the small businesses of the town. And under New England Town Law, I have the right and responsibility to politely ask for statutes to protect small-town way of life. And because we're New Englanders and we're blunt, I have the right and responsibility, and this is a quote from the old law, that I can ask politely for statutes that are in my best interest. But then, anyone can ask the same thing. We are unique. Other places don't live the way we live. We don't have a county government, the state is broke, they just declared $34 million in deficit for the fourth quarter, they're not coming down here. Small-town government is made up of small-town residents, and that's why we get to ask politely to bring statutes to protect our way of life. And in my cynicism, I say, we're not going to move the buildings, but it's our town, we can move the periases. Thank you very much, appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. Would like, anybody would like to speak? Your name and address, please?
Yeah, this is Jim Mason, your three-year veteran of the Connecticut, I should note that these meetings have been compelling. I'll keep it short and simple. I like option number two. I like the idea that we relax the 500-foot section to 400 feet, and I strongly would oppose, as far as the restaurants go for on-premises consumption, to keep that up to 1500 foot. My opinion is this here, Northford and Northford, it would be very hard to find pockets of neighbors that have sidewalks, I mean, everything is, you either have to drive there, you just don't walk on city streets. And these strip malls, having at least one establishment that serves on the premises is okay, but having multiple establishments within a strip mall, and if you look along Route 17 or 80, mostly would be have strip malls. And people pull in, they park, they go in, they eat their food, they consume around the corner, they come out. Having multiple restaurants within a very short distance, I'm just opposed to having everybody having a non-habitant living permit. So I support reducing it from 500 feet to 400 feet, and, but I oppose the off-premises consumption for 1500 foot, and I believe that was option two, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Don Del Vecchio, Y, 847 Forest Room, property owner. We had the three options before this evening, just wanted to clarify 54.2. The old regulation measured the separating distance from the nearest corner of the church building, school building, synagogue building. The way I'm reading this, it seems to read the same way, but Carrie, when you were discussing it earlier, you're suggesting that you do want to make a change to that. I would suggest that you be consistent, and if there are multiple uses of a property, that it's the primary use that would control the measurement, and...
Can you give an example of that? Can you give an example of that?
If you have a school that happens to have one piece of a playground apparatus, the school, the primary use would be the school and not the playground. What I consider a town-owned playground or park, I think you're considering something like the north end of Northford, where they have the actual park. I can't recall the name of the park. If you guys can help me out with that, I can't recall. But I think that's a clear instance where it's a town-owned playground or park. It's not, it doesn't have multiple uses, like your school may have a, you know, one piece of apparatus, and you really want to constitute that as a town-owned playground or a park. And so if there are multiple uses, I think the primary use would control.
Well, I think the school, I think, I think, Kerry, I think we might have clarified this. The school, if there's a school and a playground, it's the parcel boundary.
That's what Kerry suggested, right?
That's in here, all right.
Okay, did I read it that way, like, maybe it's just not the way I'm reading it?
Yeah, it's gonna be synagogue, college building, or school building, park, or town-owned playground parcel boundary. So the first parts are, the church, the synagogue, and the college building would be the actual physical structure, corner to corner, and then the school building, park, town-owned playground are parcel boundaries.
Maybe we even take out building, if the commission likes to say school, park, or town-owned playground.
Yeah, so if there, if there is, like, for instance, if there's a, if one of the schools, or it's not the school anymore, but if there was a playground and a school, it's the boundary.
So the example that came up is Stanley T.
Yeah.
Because in that situation, it had been a school, is no longer a school, now it's a community center. Where do you measure from? If you previously measured from the building corner when it was a school, but now that it's no longer a school, then do you revert to the parcel boundary?
For the primary use, which is the administrative.
It's a town, yeah, it's now town-owned, so...
It's just an existing, non-conformal use.
But by having, I guess my thinking is by having it be the school boundary, it takes care of this issue, because there's a playground on it. If there's a playground on it, it automatically goes to the parcel boundary.
Yep.
Do you consider, like, the football fields, playgrounds, or is it...
I think it would be a play structure is what I was interpreting that as, not a football field or a ball field. It would have to be a jungle gym, or a swing set, or some kind of play structure, but...
All right, we're into...
That's a good point as well.
Yeah, because we have, we have... Yeah, like, down by the police station, you have fields, no playground, so we might have to... Yeah, we might have to include something like that in there as well.
Yeah, and...
We might have to actually describe it by...
But those are the parks.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, we don't have anything in here.
Those are parks.
That's true, so maybe Swatch Park.
Yeah, we might have, yes, we might have to add some like... Oh, we do have park in here.
Right.
We do have park in there.
We have park.
Okay.
We just don't have ball fields, so I don't know if there's a ball field that is not a park and doesn't have a play structure.
I guess you can call it a ballpark.
Well...
I think all of the schools, facilities are separate from, not under parking rights. We're in a board of that, and it really matters.
I'm a little confused, what about the, say, the high school that has tennis court? Are you figuring the tennis court is a boundary, or it's just the school itself?
For this, for this parcel that we're at, with the high school and NBISS, it would be the entire parcel, which encompasses both schools and all of the fields.
So we do have, we have parks in there, so I think we're covering that. So a park can be, could be a ball field, or whatever it might be.
And we should just think, we should look at that and see if there are any ball fields that are not parks or not associated with a school.
I think the, the one I'm thinking of is Mill Road and Chase?
Yeah, the one on, with Chase Lane, that's not a park, it's a playing field.
But that's all residential there anyway, so that wouldn't be a factor.
It's not gonna happen, but thinking about that type of thing.
Yeah.
So we describe it.
Because the town owns that. So maybe we can change, put it something like town, park, or town-owned... Well, we can get there.
Yeah, we're gonna look at it.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to work the terminology out on that one, all right.
Okay. Fifty-four point three, the addition of the valid existing permit. Once again, as I mentioned earlier, the zoning regulation regulating property use and not the holder of the permit. You can't regulate the permit need, but, so I don't really see the need for that, because you're regulating the property use where the liquor outlet is located within its own, and not necessarily the holder of the permit or the person. And because you can't do that, you only regulate property use. The other issue, fifty-four point four point one, I stated this earlier, just even, you know, the intent of the regulation is not a use of access, it's based more upon the negative impact of the negative advertising association with liquor, sale of liquor, proximity to places of public gathering, where young adults tend to carry, I mean, I think that's a key point there. The fifteen hundred foot rule issue, I guess I'll address that when my application comes up this evening. Probably best to focus on that at that point. I'm assuming that that is gonna come up later this evening, right Kerry?
Yeah, it's on each other, yeah.
Propose number two to fifty-four point four point two. You know, why the distinction between onsite and offsite consumption regarding fifteen hundred foot rule? Not really clear why that is there, as I stated earlier. The onsite consumption is probably the most offensive. You have your bars, clubs, taverns, where people tend to drink a lot, get annoyed, and not just drive home drunk from these establishments. So why, that would be, why would you allow more of those types of uses and not simply, as Charlie suggested, when you have strictly a retail use, whether it be a grocery store or a liquor store, which is really just a retail use, much less offensive? And basically, yeah, you see maybe excluding that from the fifteen hundred foot rule. I would suggest that it be a topic of both onsite and offsite consumption. I'll just also refer if the, when my application comes before you. And now, the third proposal, fifty-four point four point three, and fifty-four point five, once again. I think this is the reason that you're seeking a change to the fifty-four point three with the, you know, the valid existing permit, because it really wants you to focus on the permit holder and the value in fifty-four point four point three, fifty-four point five. He could relocate his business. If you start chasing the permit and not the use of the property, and the use of the property is anything you could regulate. And so it's a clever idea to get you to focus on the permit itself, but this fifty-four point four point three, fifty-four point five would allow any liquor outlet to relocate in any proximity or territory of schools. So I'm not sure that you need to be that expansive in the regulation. And you say, so some of your comments for the my application, but I just wanted to get a couple of those points in front.
Anybody else like to speak? Any final comments, or, you good? You good? Do we have any other comments, everybody from the, so, okay, I can close the public hearing at this point? Make a motion? Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Public hearing's closed. Next order of business is PZ, continued public hearing for PZ application two thousand and fourteen fifteen dash eleven. Don?
So while Don's coming up, I'll just say the same thing that I did hear from the police, and that they had no issue with the proposed change, and also with the town attorney just saying that any changes to the regulation shall be in conformance with the plan of conservation and development.
Okay, Kerry, I think the last meeting, I believe there was one copy start that the case that I introduced, a West Side package store. So I just wanted to get that on the record. The proposal, you know, my proposal is purely consistent with the current regulations. Essentially, it just clarifies how the measurement will be taken, strictly unmeasurement, and eliminates the fifteen hundred foot rule between both onsite and offsite consumption. And it also provides for a size limitation in order to, you know, preserve the minimum pops and not allow for a large discount liquor outlets to be located within the town. Town Durham uses that penalty restriction quite effectively in preserving the rural character of Durham. You know, once again, I just want to state that, you know, as far as the fifteen hundred foot rule, it really don't seek any distinction as to why it should be a difference between the onsite and offsite consumption. The onsite consumption is the most offensive, as I stated earlier, you have your bars, taverns, pubs, things of that nature, where people tend to drink, become obnoxious, and those are the outlets that present the most problematic for the police in regulating the public safety within the town. The...
Well, let me ask you a question on that. You know, how about for, you know, you have, say you have an existing on-premise site that cannot get a liquor, cannot get a permit because of where they're located?
I thought you were gonna say within fifteen hundred feet of a restaurant.
Yeah, say there's two restaurants, you know, one can't have one because, just because of that, the fifteen hundred foot.
My proposal eliminates that fifteen hundred foot rule for both on and off sites, so that wouldn't be a concern in my proposal. And my, say, my proposal addresses, eliminates, extending with a loop-based proposing of the elimination of the fifteen hundred foot rule for onsite consumption, I'm extending that to offsite consumption for your, because the package stores are really a retail outlet, and people come, they shop, and they go home. And the same thing is true with grocery stores, same type of thing. They come in, they purchase beer, and then they leave the premises. It's, you know, as far as public safety, it doesn't present the concern that you have with the onsite consumption. And it's much less offensive, it doesn't, you know, if you were to ask the police department, I'm sure they'd keep that a lot of their concerns are, you know, focused more primarily on the onsite consumption. And just, you know, just to go back a second to the fifty hundred foot rule, as I stated earlier, really those are accounts, Durham Madison, Gilford, I'm sorry, Durham Madison, Clinton, you stated, none of them have the fifteen hundred foot rule. You don't see an undue concentration of any type of liquor outlets in this town. And the reason for that is that competition and market forces regulate that. And in a democracy, you have a free market economy, no, let's face it, no business likes competition. And a good example of that, you know, my family was the first and the center of town that had a gas station. You know, when the, as the town grew, and there was a need for additional service providers because of the growth of the community, they did come, you know, there wasn't a regulation that said you can't have a second gas station. And the competition, you know, benefits everyone. And what it does is it, you know, essentially provides for better pricing because of the competition. You don't have a monopoly. And that's the reason why the laws eliminated this fifteen hundred foot rule, because it really is anti-business, it acts as an uncompete clause, and it's in direct contradiction to what the zoning requirements were intended to do, and that is to focus and concentrate similar uses in certain areas based upon your zoning districts, so that you don't have sprawl outside of those districts. And the use itself of a liquor outlet still obviously needs to be permitted within that zone or district. And so basically, you're just allowing concentration within an area where these uses are already permitted. And so I think that, like I said earlier, you know, the market forces will control the concern, any concern about the undue concentration of any liquor outlets. I think that West Side case that I introduced is a good example of that. Or the, you know, the courts went along with the planning and zoning commission saying that really that provision, you know, outweighed the usefulness, served only an anti-competitive purpose. You know, so the planning and zoning boards need the flexibility based upon the growth of the communities and a need for additional service providers as the community grows, just like you would have, you know, two gas stations in the center, you could accommodate two liquor stores. And there may be, and there are going to be certainly different uses, my proposal would try, you know, more focused on.
You're talking, you're talking a couple of different things, and one is, you know, about growth. Well, this is about alcoholic beverage, whether it's on-premise or off-premise. Those can't grow. Okay, they, I mean, they're established, we can't have more in the town. So as far as growth, I, you know, I'm not sure how that fits in to what the actual regulation is.
Well, they can certainly relocate, the existing permissions can relocate in certain areas to provide for additional competition. And I certainly understand that there will not be any additional permits, but the existing permissions can certainly relocate. And, you know, it provides for competition as the areas grow and develop. And that's, typically, that's what you're gonna see with your restaurants, similar type of uses. And really, that, really, the argument that you're making...
Well, I'm not making an argument, I'm just asking to clarify, that's all.
The argument you're making really supports my conception, is that the free marketplace is going to regulate whether or not you're going to have an undue concentration of liquor outlets or restaurants in close proximity to one another. For example, the, as you said, it's state law regulates the number of liquor permits, so they're difficult to obtain, so, and this is the reason why a lot of your accounts that I weigh in is your finding, because the market forces and the marketplace are gonna control that. You're not gonna have all six liquor outlets, retail liquor outlets, liquor stores located in a market center. And you're not gonna have every...
Well, if you change the regulation, you know, I mean...
Right, and the reason you're not gonna have six of them located in any one proximity is because it wouldn't be prudent to do that. I mean, it just wouldn't be enough business to support that type of concentration of any liquor outlet. And that's why the adjoining accounts, as I stated, Clayton Madison, they don't have this provision, because essentially, the marketplace will regulate itself. And that's basically what the West Side case involved in, you know, the spirit of anti-competitive. There aren't any other businesses that can regulate.
I mean, you stay in that case, but one of the things is, I mean, we have two regulations, and we'll take them, you know, take them both separately, and then, you know, put them together. But the one question is, you know, we're talking about anti-competitive, and one thing that I haven't heard, and I mean, the public's hearing is still open, and anybody could, you know, speak on that, is that there's a hardship. I haven't heard a compelling story from the, for hardship from the alcohol beverage portion of this. I mean, this is what this is about. So, I mean, changing a regulation, you know, we're open to look, you know, where our current regulations are, how they fit, how they fit into the future, but we also gotta hear a compelling story. You know, are these owners, are they at a complete disadvantage because of the regulation? And that's something that we haven't heard in either.
I think that, what you, if I can interject...
Oh, absolutely.
Is that I believe in certainly free enterprise. I don't, I don't understand the difference between a restaurant, because if you have an Italian restaurant, a Spanish restaurant, a Greek restaurant, they could be all together and they could all serve liquor. It doesn't mean that somebody's gonna hop, skip, and jump from one... It doesn't mean that somebody's going to hop, skip, and jump from one bar to the next. They're going to go to the bar, they'll get drunk, and the, our laws will take care of that. But when you ask about putting a liquor outlet, say, in a package store, I think that you have to look at, this is the way I feel, you have to look at the established people that have had businesses in this town, and we are a small town, for 10, 20, some of them 30 years. I think it puts undue disadvantage to them to now say, well, somebody can open up next door to you. I don't think that's fair to the people that have been here, established themselves, have paid their taxes, been good citizens, and I don't, and I don't see, and I understand that there's a free society and competition and everything, but you start having liquor, you know, people saying, well, I can buy it there 10 cents cheaper, and then he goes 10 cents cheaper. I just don't think it's fair to the established people that we've had here.
Yeah, I think, it's just what you're doing, you're trying to, where you let the marketplace, and my argument to that would be, would you do the same thing for the gas station owners or...
I don't, we're not discussing gas stations, we're discussing packages.
No, I understand, but you could apply that same principle across the board to any business and say, you know...
Well, I don't think we're discussing that, discussing liquor outlets.
No, Dom, if there was a regulation, if there was a proposed regulation, we would take that under advisement, no matter what it is. I mean, I mean, if, if it meant, if there was to regulate that, I mean, if somebody wanted to propose something, you know, it would be our obligation to, you know, consider it, whether it's an early discussion, I mean, we, you know, we look, you know, we want, we look at the regulations and, you know, we'll, we try to take a look and see how it fits, you know, whether it's, you know, you know, we don't want to, you know, it's Fran, I understand where you're coming from, where you don't want, you know, the free market portion of it too, and, you know, we try to, you know, find what the best fit is. So I'm just, I mean, just, I mean, just to clarify is that I don't, the hardship I want to see is from the, the owners, or somebody who was affected.
Obviously, owners don't want to see any competition, you know that.
That's fine, I mean, that's, yeah.
You can understand that, because that's...
Right. But they, I mean, they're established in their certain areas. I mean, if there was a hardship, if, if they were feeling a hardship, I would expect them to be here asking us to make some changes. And, and, you know, some regulations come up that way, some are proposed in different ways. But I'm just saying, that's, that's one of the things we like to hear though, is that, you know, how is it going to affect the owners? Is this regulation? That's what I want to hear, you know, from you.
Yeah, and I guess that's my argument, that's not just, I'm just not focused on the liquor outlets, I'm talking about all businesses in general, whether it's a gas station...
Well, this is, this is only, yeah, we have to focus on this, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I want to be specific.
I'm trying to, you know, apply this principle, you know, the competition to all businesses, but it's, it's...
I mean, if somebody, we just had an instance where there was three cleaners, there was three cleaners going in. Now, obviously, the competition was great enough that one of them had to leave.
Right.
But if, if the, if the, if the other staff, if they had come and said, we want to make a, we want you to change the regulations so that there can't be any more than two cleaners within so many feet of each other, regardless how stupid it is, we have to look at it.
Right, right.
So it's entirely different than, right now, we're talking about alcohol beverages, we're not applying it to anything else.
Right, I understand, and I'm just saying, look at the others, Ron, and I'm not going to...
But we are North, we are North Branford, we are not Clinton, we are not Guilford, we are not Durham, they're all spread out, they have established areas, we are a unique town.
That's all I got.
Yeah, I mean, we like to look at other regulators, we, we look at other town regulations, you know, and other towns look at us, and we'll get referrals from other towns that are near our property boundaries, regulations are different, but when we, when we give them, provide our recommendation, we look at our, how it fits to our regulation, and we make the recommendation based on that.
Right.
But I do have another question for you, and we're, on 54.5, on your...
Yes.
The 300, the 3,000 gross fee.
Yeah, that was just an estimate that I came up with, I mean, I could hear...
And would you base that on, I mean, I just, just...
I think it was a general, a general number. A 14,000 square feet.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know how they came up with that, just looking at some of the average sizes, some of the liquor rounds.
Okay. I think you know the drill, right? Name and address?
I'm giving you my serial number this time.
No, please don't, no personal information, no, no, no.
This is Jenny, 3071 of Connecticut. I oppose the reduction of the applicants from 1,500 feet to, sure, whatever, and here's why. And in the applicant, you've spoken about the case that I gave you, West Side Package, West Side Package. But here, here's the heading, so that everybody knows. It's West Side Package Store versus the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Torrenton. Not the town of Torrenton, but the city, we're not a city, we're still a town. And let's, let's see what it says about the city of Torrenton, Connecticut.
Excuse me, point of order? No, no, stop. Stop, no.
There is no city of Torrenton, State of Connecticut. It does not exist. No such thing.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm reading from the legal site...
Yep.
Which says, "The city of Torrenton." I don't know what the gentleman's saying, but this is the city of Torrenton, the legal site, we have the case in front of you. And here it's described, "Torrenton is the largest city in Lisford County, Connecticut, in the Lisford Hills region. It is also the core city of the largest metropolitan area in the United States." That's who we're going to compare to. I don't think these words are going to run off the internet. So I don't think we should be compared to Torrenton, because there's been a lot of money, it's like the function is to move that sort of professional team. Also, in the case that is often cited to you, the chairman of the commission noted that 5.3 is virtually the only business that has an anti-competition clause in it. So the problem is that the regulation stated it was an anti-competition clause. What we're hearing tonight is that ours acts like one, but ours doesn't state it is. And that's a big discern, difference between the two of them. We don't have that. And I want to add about better pricing and competition, but the last time I was here, somebody who owns a liquor store, they said, "That doesn't happen, the liquor world is regulated by the state of Connecticut, you can only use so much, and that's it." As long as the coffee store, where you have, you know, a chute store, and say, "Okay, I want to get a second pair of clogs," that's not what happens in the liquor industry. It has to be regulated by the state of Connecticut. And I'm talking about gas stations. So what if we have two gas stations running next to each other, so we put a third one in, or we put a fourth one in, that's supposed to give us better prices, to bring more people to the north, to the center, to buy gasoline? It's not what happens, it hurts the other one. And when I first moved into this town, in this town, I don't know if anybody's familiar with it, there was the New York Bank Trust Company, right in that, that, I mean, talking about where he, this, where the one, one of the, the, one of the, and I know it was to me, but it just works on our nerves, and doesn't have a system of our history. The one thing is that two banks, well, can you imagine, trust company closed up, we're going around, okay, I think Dom can do this a while, but now there's no longer bank, it's a rollercoaster. So how the bureaucracy doesn't bring in more people, it hurts the other ones. Marketing, I disagree, we are not a metropolitan area, we don't allow advertising all these things that come to you, the 104% and 100%, I disagree with that. As far as the hardship, I went to one of those meetings, and it's the hardship of the property, not the person. And what we're going to make now, that's that, there is no hardship with the property, unless there was an oil line under it, yeah, okay, there's an oil line, that's a hardship, we don't get the oil, that's somebody, you know, who does the oil. That's not what we're talking here. And as far as having different restaurants to serve a different alcohol, for, for the on-premises, we have to understand, our strip malls on Northford and North Brankford, each one of them entered a major thoroughfare. They entered either Route 17, Route 22, or maybe Route 19. And having multiple restaurants serving multiple hours, serving alcohol and everything, just encourages more people drinking and going out to the rest of the street. That's why this is even at this time. Maybe sometime in the future, it may be beneficial to Northford and North Brankford, but we have the growth here, I don't think we're there yet, and I don't think passing regulation or legislation is going to get us there any quicker. I think, you know, the old man has that we hear, you have to crawl before the rock, walk before your rock. So I think it's a little bit of people should do something like that.
Let me just, I just want you to clarify, what was, about the restaurant, you're for the, you're for, no, what I'm saying, for the on-premise, you're for or against...
He's against it.
I'm against reducing the 1,500 foot for on-premise consumption, because all of our restaurants, with the exception of maybe one that I'm aware of, are strip malls, okay? And if we have, like, let's say the center of Northford, which I'm more familiar with, you know, we have a meat spot, we have a Chinese place, we have a baked bean, a couple others. So if we were to allow the Chinese to start having, sit down, start serving alcohol and everything, well, we would be having more people, like I said, we don't work a year ago, we'd have more people drinking on premises. And then, actually, in the parking lot, if we have people who have consumed alcohol, I think at this point in time, it's a little bit dangerous, I, I just think we're not ready for that. So I'm against the on-premise, we got, reducing the on-premise to 1,500 feet, to 1,000 feet. I don't think if we allow all restaurants to serve alcohol, we're going to get more, more business, I, I just don't see it. Our population doesn't demand that we do that at this point in time. I think that's all I have to say.
How about for an existing business that is already here but can't get a permit, an existing restaurant?
No, because this, it serves the same purpose as, as my objection is that, if you have two restaurants in a strip mall, and one of them serves alcohol, and then now we allow the other one, and they both been here at one time, but just one has to never get it, now when we have allowed that person in that restaurant to serve alcohol, well, you're going to have double the amount of people coming in to drink, and I just disagree with that. Right now, how do you want establishment, you know, serve alcohol? That's just the way I feel, this is...
But they're not going to go to both restaurants at the same time.
No, no, you're right, but no. People who go to the Italian restaurant, now, people who go to the Spanish restaurant in the, who's the other one you said?
Greek.
Okay, but now they have two restaurants serving alcohol, and more people coming there, I mean, more people drinking, and then having to drive out of the parking lot and enter the highways, you know, between the different routes on the highway. That's my personal point, okay? But as far as the, and I think this applicant is for reducing the package stores to 1,500 feet, I disagree with it, I think in this case about the Westfield Package is certainly not a point of us, and I want to thank you guys, because I'm sure you guys do a lot of volunteer time, so thank you very much for presenting, thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Yep, please.
I know this is petty, but...
Oh, for your, your name and...
James Miller, Connecticut, I know this is petty, but it is a point of order, point of fact. There were six cities in Connecticut where the medic was demoted, there are five cities in Connecticut. That is point of order, point of fact.
All right, we'll just, we'll take, take a note of that. Anybody else like to speak?
Felipe Pasor, a French road in East Haven. I just want to clarify one thing. In the original application, Mr. Del Vecchio, I saw his original application, did not include anything about a, a size restriction. That was not advertised, in my personal legal opinion, it's not among the subjects that this commission can contemplate because it was not advertised. So in my opinion, that is not properly before the commission. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Dom, anybody else? Oh, yes, please. Just your name and address, please.
Janet Rathbun, 26 Burncliff Drive.
You speak a little bit closer to that.
Janet Rathbun, 26 Burncliff Drive, Northford. I just wanted to indicate that I, I actually support eliminating the 1,500 feet for restaurants, because I understand that this gentleman is concerned about people drinking and all, but I believe that we have the potential of bringing in more businesses and expanding businesses by allowing that. And there are lots of places that have multiple restaurants serving liquor in a, in a restricted area, and basically, they're not saying that they don't want that because of potential problems. As far as the off-premises situation, I don't support the 1,500 foot elimination, because I think that, given the fact that we only have five permits in this town, it will only hurt the existing businesses, and I think that it's entirely inappropriate. So I just wanted that to be unrecorded. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak, before we close the public hearing? Anybody else?
Just one comment, I don't know if we have comments to this, but in your packet, I included, as Dom included as well, a copy of the town of Clinton's regulations. And I spoke with the zoning enforcement officer there, because they, as Dom mentioned, do not have the 1,500-foot rule, and they recently amended their regulations last summer. And the zoning enforcement officer said that that issue never came up, they never even really discussed the 1,500-foot rule as far as adding it. Instead, what they did is they have a section, as you see, regarding signage at package stores, which is kind of interesting. And so what they do is they regulate that at least 50% of the window has to be unoccupied by any kind of advertising. It's just kind of a spinoff of that, it doesn't regulate that two package stores can exist next to one another, but it just, they focus more on the signage component.
Okay. Perfect. And just to clarify, tonight is the last night for a public hearing for this?
No. Well, we can, we can...
I think we can close it, but, and then...
So we'll just, just tell you the timeline. The public hearing for this item has to be closed by February 26th.
Okay.
So we could have it open for another meeting.
Well, since the, if you close a hearing, it's just a workshop.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, then we would have six, if you close a public hearing, it's 65 to one.
Yeah. So do I hear, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I mean, we should make close of the public hearing.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? See, none that passes by, zero. Uh, Charlie did. Did you second him?
No. Two from Tom.
Ron.
I think I got it. Do I have it? Next order of business is a new public hearing. This is P&amp;Z Application 2014-15-13. Advocate Ron and Maria Reynolds. Do, I have a legal, do I have a legal notice?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The following advertisement appeared in the sound on Thursday, January 22nd, 2015, and Thursday, January 29th, 2015. Legal notice, North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given to the North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission, holds public hearings at 7:00 p.m. on Thursday, February 5th, 2015, at the North Branford Intermediate School, 654 Fox and Road, North Branford, to consider the following. Application 2014/15-13, special news permit request under Section 23.1, Schedule A, Line A11, to allow accessory dwelling unit over... A11, to allow accessory dwelling unit over 1,600, 600 square feet at 47 Conifer Drive, Lot Map 71, Lot 36, R40 Zone. Applicant Ronald and Maria Reynolds. At this hearing, all interested persons may appear and be heard, written communications will be received. Copies of the vote proposals are on file for public transportation in the Town Ball Planning Department, dated January 14th, 2015, North Ramford, Connecticut. Harry Dula, Chairman.
Uh, seated for this public hearing is alternate member Holgren, uh, regular member Sienna Leskovic-Gunn and Dula. So we'll, what we, what we do at this point is, if you could just walk us through what your application is. Uh, I see we have some information and, uh, that Carrie provided, but if you could give us a general idea of what it is.
It's a raised ranch, and, uh, we had a family room and a kitchen and a bathroom down there already. But my daughter and grandson moved down there, and now we need a little bit more room. So what we wanted to do is get two bedrooms down there, and extend a kitchen to more of a dining room kitchen. We only had enough room just for the kitchen, basically.
As I recall reading this, you're, you're not going to change the exterior of the house at all, right? You're going to re-order the bedrooms.
Yeah, we're moving into the garage.
Oh, so you're just, your existing garage is going to be now part of, part of the house?
Yes.
Okay. Carrie, do you have anything, uh, any comments?
I submitted these plans to the town engineer, and he did not have any outstanding issues. The building official just stated that the project has to conform to the Connecticut Building Code, and sleeping area must be, needs to be rest departments, and smoke and CO detections required. East Shore Health also did not have any issues, um, because they're actually tied into, um, town sewer. And then Fire Marshal also just stated that the applicant must follow all Connecticut fire safety codes, including installation of smoke detection and carbon monoxide detectors. So there's really no, no issue with the referrals that I sent around. Um, I spoke with Mr. Reynolds today, and, um, I haven't received the green card yet.
All right.
I'll put those in the file. Um, there were two, okay, but they were mailed out. And then Land Trust, he actually contacted via email, um, and they were fine with it because he didn't realize that he actually needed to mail it to them, but he spoke with David Sargent over email, so I think there's no issue there. They said that they have no objection to the decision.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Would anybody like to speak, uh, since this is a public hearing, would anybody like to speak on this application? Shall I be, at this time, I'm going to, uh, do you kind of, someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Ron seconds it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? See none, the mo, uh, public hearing's closed. Uh, what we'll do now is, the next step would be, uh, public hearings closed, uh, so later on in our agenda, we will, we will bring this up, have a discussion, and, and there might, maybe a motion to approve or not based on that. So if you, you could stay for that part of it, or we could, uh, reach out and contact you, I'm not sure how long the rest of the meeting will go, but one way or the other. Okay, we, we, yeah, we'll, we'll notify you.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yeah, we should get the question.
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't sure, but, um-
Do you know what, the two or three people are here for?
Yes, they are for the Clinton道路.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Okay. The next order of business is, um, possible, uh, the, the action on the P&amp;Z application 14-15-5, 15-11, and the one we just heard, 15-11, uh, 13. So let's start with, um, 2014-15-5. Now, I think we, we've had a lot of information in front of us tonight, a couple different options. So one thing we could do is either start a discussion, oh, we have 65 days, correct?
Correct.
All right, so there's about four meetings in between?
Yeah, so it's until, um, we would have to make a decision by April 11th.
Okay. So do we want to have that discussion tonight, or would you like to just, uh-
I would like, for myself, I would like to be able to go through them all and write my own little agenda down because right now I'm a little discombobulated with being all over the place.
Yeah, different options, okay.
I agree with that.
Would it be helpful for me to provide more options to-
No.
Okay, I don't know.
I mean, the options are there, but it's something repetitive, and-
Sure.
I just need to sit down and write it out and straighten it out in my own mind.
Yeah, and if there's changes you want to make, and make an option four or five or whatever, we can clearly do that. We could pick an option and then make changes to it. I think we come down to that.
Definitely for the measurement section, I can clean that up and-
Yes.
Submit something to you.
Okay. Um, is, are, is everybody in agreeance in that? We'll, we'll take this and then we'll, we'll bring it back up in next meeting? Okay. Do we want to do the same thing with the next one, which is this, uh, the alcoholic bev, uh, let me just make sure I got the right one here.
And make a motion that we look at all of them together, all the different, um, proposals that are concerning alcohol beverage.
I don't think, I don't think we can merge them together. We've got to act on them separately.
Yeah, all right, so we'll-
I think, well, I mean, I'll, I'll defer, but I don't think we can.
I don't think there's a way we can take the first one on the whole big section 54 and merge or make the hearing data, information, part of the, the one for the 1,500 feet, Don's. Because we, I don't know whether we ever announced the second continuation of public hearing.
What do you mean?
When we started, and I think we, I don't know whether we left it, look at the minutes.
We left them both open.
Yeah, no. I don't know whether we ever started the second one.
Yeah.
Or did we get them merged together? That's, I have to say.
No, they were separate.
No, no, they were two separate.
I know they were. Did we hold two separate continuations? I don't remember seeing a hearing.
No, um, yeah, they were both continued.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were both continued, so, but they were separate.
Yeah, yeah, anyway.
I mean, what we could do, and I mean, I, I-
So much of this stuff in the, in the big 54 pertains to the other one, it may be valuable.
My thought was that we take one of them, wherever application is, so, let, let, let's, just let's have that conversation then. So we have two. We have the one with three options, and then we have, um, the second one, which is, um, application 2014-11, which is, uh, Mr. Del Vecchio's. Okay, so we have those two. So what I think we should do is take a look in, I'm trying to make this so it's, take one of the regulations, I mean, take one of the applications, but in, adjust it to where exactly we want it for that one final regulation that we vote on. And then the other applicant, we would have to, uh-
I think it's better to take a real hard look at each one and then come up with exactly, I mean, it's too confusing to say we're going to take one and we're going to adjust that one, then all of a sudden, the, the second one is left in limbo and maybe-
Well, no, I was thinking that maybe we, I mean, I, I don't want to, if we took one, one, one of the, or, let's see, one of the applications, whatever option there is.
What you're saying.
And then we're going to say, okay, when we come, that night when we come back to have that discussion and make the changes and move to approve or whatever we want to do, once we make all our tweaks, we approve one, and then we deny the other, saying that the reason why we're denying is because we, we put all the information into one. I don't, I mean, I'm not sure if, I want to make sure that's a point, I mean-
I, because I think when you're looking at them, you have to look at them-
Together.
Where you're seeing the endpoint.
Yeah.
Where you want to be. I mean, you, you have two in front of you, and, and, and maybe you're getting some from one and something from the other.
Right.
Right.
But I, I would tend to agree somewhere. You have to, then you have to take one final action.
Right.
Exactly.
But we'd have, we'd take one final action, but then the other one we'd have to deny because we can't, we can't merge them together.
Because it's already incorporated in or-
Yeah.
I understand that.
Yeah, so-
You're not planning on doing that now.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, when we, I'm saying, when we're looking at them, let's look at both applications together, merge the best of both. We approve one, we'll have a discussion in whatever it might be, and if we do approve one, then we have no choice but to deny the other.
Exactly.
Because, and you, and the reason why we're, we'd be denied is because we've incorporated that into the other one.
Or, I mean, I-
I just want to make sure we're-
If you sort of craft something where you want to end up, and then you maybe highlight what's from one and what's from the other, I mean, it, it may be that you take all from one and maybe from another, or, or bits and pieces.
Or it could be a modification of both.
Of both, yeah. Okay.
But we sort of, I think you have to get, what do we want to end up? And then you go, okay, what's from, which from?
But one, but, but if we do, if we do, if we do make a change, and if we do, uh, decide to vote on one of the regulations and it's approved, uh, one applicant, you know, one of the applicants, we do have to deny the other one.
But can you not do a whole nother, a, a whole nother?
No, we would just do it once. We're just doing it once.
No, I understand that, but-
Two separate hearings, two separate votes.
Yeah, you definitely have to have that, but, you know, we're just seeing what is the best way to-
And Mr. Del Vecchio's was a single shot, get rid of this. That's it. So that, that's easy. You either agree or disagree with it.
Or it could be handled, his answer's going to be dictated by the first one. Yes.
That's, that's what I was, I mean, that's what I was getting at, is that we, but let's take in consideration both options when we're, when we're going through. If we're using options one, two, and three, and you, let's use that to start with, but incorporate Mr. Del Vecchio's into that, if you feel, you know, if that's what you feel, well, well, we have to come up with one regulation under one app-
Absolutely.
-application, and then the other one, we would just say, all of our changes-
Yeah, I'm thinking you may say, well, deny this because we have already addressed the meeting.
That's the way you say it.
Yeah, that's what I just want to make, yeah.
Right.
I just want to make sure that we, I don't want to say that one applicant, taking one applicant over the other, I'm just saying, we, we, it's more one application over the other, not the applicant.
It's, one application has more things that we agree on than the other one, but the other one has something in there that should be into this one.
Absolutely, yeah.
So we're going to deny that because we've already incorporated into this one.
Yeah, all right, okay.
You'll also be, I, I keep hearing the word denied over and over again. They may be merged together, and the second one may be a mute point.
Are you denying the application?
We have to deny the whole application.
But it, it might be a mute point.
It would be.
That it's already included.
Right, but we still have to have, we still have to vote on that, on this application. Yeah, we have to close that out.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll bring that, we'll, we'll do that, Carrie, if you, all right, so we'll, you'll clean that a little bit up, or the regulation a little bit, gives, you, and then you'll give that to us, and then we'll work on that.
Yes.
For next one, okay.
Yes, so those-
What do you want me to do?
She's going, she was going to-
Just change that, the-
The measurement?
Yeah, okay.
Question of the parcel boundary, and, and there, I was looking at Clinton's, they have something about recreational fields, so maybe taking some length, something to tweak it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you just, you have to be so careful because somebody always comes in with that little loophole that you missed.
Right, yep. All right, so we're going to, we'll, we'll, we'll take that up at the next meeting, those two applications, fifth, uh, dash, uh-
Well, three, actually.
No, the two, 15-5 and 15-11. Now, 15-13 is the one we just heard.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to us.
Is there a second?
To do that.
To approve?
The special use permit for the second.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Is there any discussion on that?
Here's-
I just think, you know, they're not making any-
Let's return some comments.
Oop.
Yeah, I move to approve P&amp;Z application 2014-15-13, special use permit for accessory dwelling unit under Section 42.5.5 and Section 23, Schedule A, Line A11, to create an accessory dwelling unit within an existing single-family house at 47 Conifer Drive, Assessor Map 71, Lot 36, R40 Zone. Owner, applicant Ronald and Maria Reynolds, as shown on submitted application map and drawing subject to the following conditions, conformance to the requirements of Section 42.5.5 of the zoning regulations, with the exception of Section 42.5.5F, per the variance that was granted by the ZBA on January 12th, 2015, and adherence to all applicable building codes and fire safety codes.
Is there, is there a second? Now, uh, any discussion?
Yeah, I made the motion because it's unusual. I think it's the first one we've ever had where they're going to develop an apartment for some of the family, and it's going to, the building stays the same look.
Yeah.
Really reduces the impact on the neighborhood.
Falls and meets all regulations.
Yep, so, so we have a second, right? Do we have a second?
Yeah.
So, okay, so this is a roll call vote, so, uh, state your vote and the reasons for your vote. So, I think, Charlie, you're first.
Yeah, I, I vote aye for the reasons I mentioned.
I vote aye because I believe that families should stay together if those help each other.
I vote aye for those reasons, and the footprint doesn't change.
Yep.
Dave Holgren, I vote aye for the same, if it meets all formal building codes of town.
Yep, I vote aye for similar reasons, uh, for, uh, the footprint's not changing, and it fits within our regulations. So that passes five to zero. About to sign anything? No?
Who has a second?
Uh, Fran.
Thank you.
Oh, boy. I didn't eat dinner yet. So the, um, now we're told business, so P&amp;Z application 2014-15-6, that's continued. Um, uh, P&amp;Z application 2014-15-A, proposed, um, self, uh, amendment to zoning regulations for self-storage?
Yes. So I, um, let's see, just a quick recap. We had two public hearings on this item. This is a proposed amendment, text amendment to the zoning regulations. The applicant was not able to attend this evening. Um, I said that if there were outstanding questions, you know, we could always continue this item. I didn't know if the commission had any outstanding questions, but it seems like based on the minor changes that were made at the last meeting, everyone seemed okay with it. I have drafted a motion.
Yeah.
You could all take a look at it.
Does anybody have any outs, any questions from that?
No, I think we should just read the motion and approve or disapprove.
Ron, are you able to, on the self-storage? Are you, oh, you, okay.
All right. Keep on. I just want to go look at it.
Just to go through this quickly, the effective date, I just want to know, would be February 26th, so that would allow for plenty of time for this decision to be published in the newspaper, and then also give about a week's, a week's time for anyone to appeal.
Okay.
So what this is saying is that now we're saying that you can have outside storage with a special use permit, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And that was in accordance with all those standards.
Right.
That were all out, very well outlining the, uh, proposed regulation changes.
Does anybody have any thoughts on this? Any, any discussions?
It was a nice job.
Yeah. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I move to approve with an effective date of February twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen, P and Z application two thousand fourteen fifteen dash eight, petition of Robert Criscolo, P E and L S, to amend the North Branford zoning regulations, to add proposed section twenty-four, schedule A, line C dash thirteen point two, self-storage facilities as site plan approval S in the I two and I three zones, and to add a proposed section twenty-four, schedule A, line C thirteen point three, self-storage facilities with outside storage as a special use U in I two and I three zones, and add under section forty-one, site development plan standards, section forty-one point three point six, self-storage facilities, use line C thirteen point two of schedule A, having special standards as contained in the proposed regulation draft revised January fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, and to add under section forty-two, special use permits, section forty-two point five point thirteen, self-storage facility, self-storage facilities with outside storage, use line thirteen point three of schedule A, having special standards as contained in the proposed regulation draft revised January fourteenth, two thousand fifteen.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? I thought it was pretty straightforward, I thought it was a very well put together regulation, but.
Yeah, I have made the motion because it's consistent with the plan of the conservation and development, which encourages the economic development and recommends development in the I zone, I two and I three zones be facilitated. The proposed regulation provides adequate standards for both site plan application and special use application, by controlling the proposed use and its related accessory and incidental uses that are often adjacent to residential zones.
I, I approve of this regulation, this motion, for the same reasons that are stated previously.
Ron?
I approve it also, especially encouraging the economic development. I think we need that in town.
I approve it, based on the grounds it's going to bring in additional businesses to utilize development space in town.
And I also approve for the same reasons that it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development. So that passes five to zero. I'm going to put it down for you. Oh, I did it, I, oh, I wrote it over here, I didn't even know you had it there. Okay, I'm learning. I'm learning. Okay. New business. Figure it out. P and Z application two thousand fifteen dash one, proposed amendment to zoning map from R four, R four already to be worn for two twenty-four Foxham Road.
So, also, the applicant was, they actually just submitted this application on January sixteenth, and we're looking to have a public hearing be scheduled for March fifth. So that would allow time to have this circulated to the regional council of governments and the appropriate local departments and boards.
Okay.
So it's really just a request to schedule the public hearing for March fifth.
Okay, got you.
And I guess one, one other question. So the commission may remember, this application came before the commission this past spring. However, there was an issue with a butter notification, they were short by one or just one a butter notification. Because of that, they were wondering if they would have to resubmit the fee, because they never actually went forward with their application.
Now, what, now, what, what was missing?
They never went forward with the public hearing, we actually noticed it and everything, so we did have those exceptions. But they didn't, hadn't sent out all their mother's notification, they, they, they had a deficient notification, so the public hearing couldn't occur.
Okay, so now, but we have to put the notification out again. We have to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I mean.
Yeah, because first of all, it was a while ago.
Yeah.
And secondly, you people.
I mean, I mean, do we have them just pay for the re-notification? Or for, you know, for us to put in the paper, and just waive everything else because they already paid for that? Because we didn't go forward with it, we didn't go forward with anything.
But that wasn't our fault.
Oh, no, I understand that. I'm just throwing it out there.
I don't think, I think we should, they should pay for whatever.
Re-advertising. Because otherwise, how would the butters find out, you know?
Oh, no, no, make them pay for it. It's either the option is either they have, what they're asking us for is to waive the fee, which I definitely don't think we should do.
I don't think so either.
But do we, is it, do we waive part of it, or we have them come with the whole thing? So.
We're going to do the whole.
We gotta do the whole thing.
Ron and Dave, you agree that we'll have them, uh.
They should.
They're asking for us to waive the fee, because they, we announced it in the newspaper, but for some reason, or I can't.
That's right, they did send out some of the notifications.
Some of the notifications didn't go out to the.
The butters.
Okay, so, what they're asking for is to waive the fees, but we have to put it back in the newspaper at our cost. So what we're saying, but, I mean, some suggestion is either waive part of the fee, or have them just pay for the whole fee.
Do we charge people for their legal notice the first time?
It's included in their fee.
When I waived the fee, right.
I'm not waiving any fees for them. Why should we? It wasn't our fault, they didn't go through with it. Why should we have to pay for any of it?
I'm thinking if they re-advertise, re-notify.
They would, they would absolutely, they would have to re-notify, so.
But that's on their expense anyway.
Right, right.
Yeah, that, that, that's not part of the fee. That they have to, that they have to do themselves. Well, the question is, is the application fee, you're asking for us to waive it, and, Fran, I don't think we should be waiving it.
I don't think so either.
It didn't afford, not because of us, right?
No, it's not our fault, no. If it was our fault, then I would definitely say we could waive it, but it was, it was in their.
And I don't believe it's a hardship, so I don't believe, I believe that it was their fault, and they should be paying for the whole thing.
Do we, do we need to vote on that, or could we just make a recommendation that they pay the fee?
Recommendation's about, they just, that I asked.
Isn't one a road in North Haven? Isn't one a road in North Haven?
Public hearing date for March.
Oh, one, March. Can somebody make, Charlie, want to make a motion to this?
I think that's North Haven.
This one right here. March fifth is the date. You want to do it for March fifth?
I, I move to set a public hearing date for March fifth. For application.
That's it.
P and Z application two thousand fifteen dash one.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor of, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes is five to zero.
Thank you.
All right.
Is one a road in North, in North Haven?
I gotta look at the map.
One a road is in North Haven.
I think it's right on the line there. Make sure. Other business. First one, bond release for nine forty-two Tuckett Road.
Basically, there's a request, but they're not ready.
Okay.
I think that's not looking into it yet.
Okay.
So that will have to come back.
Okay. Okay, now the next one. These are what these gentlemen are here for?
Yes.
Uh, discussion regarding Clintonville Road proposal on zoning, zoning regulation change? Is this it?
They haven't submitted.
Oh, okay, got you.
Right, you don't have anything in your package on this?
No. Yeah, yep. When you go around a little bit, there you go.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is John Mancino, Principal with D L Companies, where I'm engineering architecture firm, three fifty-five Research Parkway, Maryland, Connecticut. With me this evening are the two owners of the parcel that we're going to introduce an idea to this commission, a revised idea to this commission, Mike Belfanti, and I'll second you. Thank you for taking the time. We came before this commission, you probably know, because we were making the job of this on Tuesday.
September.
September. And we had presented an idea for tax amendment for what we're calling is a open space cluster subdivision. And at the time, we were talking about a product that would be targeted to a targeted age. And so we're talking about a master bedroom on the first floor, two bedroom units, two bedroom, dwelling units, footprints that would either be targeted, you know, empty nester, or first time homeowner, basically keeping either the young professional in town, or keeping the elderly or retired person in town, living in the unit that has a master bedroom on the first floor. We were proposing at the time third units in this plan, and we had submitted a draft regulation that I was hoping to also have with me tonight, but our attorney, David Gibson, unfortunately, on December twenty-third, just recently, had a stroke, and he is recovering right now. And so our goal was to just come here this evening and sort of reintroduce where we are in the process. We made a pretty significant change to the plan, and also increased our lot area, increased our open space, and that will allow us to have some back and forth dialogue, so we do submit the draft regulation. We can at least have some information.
How many, how many room this one?
This one's twenty-five.
Okay, and that one was, how many?
Third.
Thirty, yeah, for that.
I just, I just wanted to orientate myself there. Right word says existing lot one.
This is the, this, so I was about to.
Oh, okay, yes.
Go over the plan.
Sorry.
That's okay. So Clintonville Road is right here, okay? The Wallingford, North Branford Town Line is back here, and the North Haven, North Branford Town Line is here. This is Firelight, okay? And this is the, the two rinks that are on Firelight Road. Back here beyond the rinks, you'll see this, this is a public street here that ends here. This is a private road, and it terminates at Culzar that is undeveloped industrial land. The parcel we're talking about is the front parcel, it's around six point four acres, and it's currently zoned R four, okay? In addition, we talk about including a piece of this large parcel, which is to the back, and that is in the text amendment that we were made, is an introduction of some other open space land. And for those who may or may not be familiar with this parcel back here, this parcel has, this land has an access easement over this property that comes over to this point, and then there's a pedestrian and vehicle bridge for folks that use and fly ultralight planes, and this is their, I guess you would say their, their.
Airport.
Their tables, their airports, their, you know, kind of facilities. It's really a pretty setting back there, if you haven't been back there to see it.
I think you should just also mention that we're working with the Land Trust in North Branford, and they have expressed interest in taking the property with certain, with a little more research and some caveats. The Land Trust has never had a tent before, and although we don't charge the model airplane club, we still let them use the property. And they're, they asked about some more information, the Land Trust on that, so I just want to be aware that we've had the people from the Land Trust out there for a site visit, and they did like the property, and we're looking at further dialogue with them.
Thank you. And so before I get into a few details, yeah, just a minute. What I wanted to do, what I wanted to do is just, I did a quick draft comparison between...
Use this one.
Okay, thank you, Chair. You're welcome.
I need to have one more.
Between the two plans, and again, this is.
I'm not touching anything, I give up. No, I'm not touching anything.
Okay, so, so as I described, essentially, there's a significant change from this plan, from there to this plan. The first thing is, we've increased the lot area. So our proposal is to take roughly one point four acres from existing lots one and two, and then swap out what's taken out of lot one by taking out of lot two, so that the ice rink lot, which is this lot, is made whole, turns stops here, we would extend its land back here. This land here matches this land here that we would add to this lot. Now, there's two reasons why we did that. One is because we studied the possibility, as, as we are proposing in the text amendment, that we need to be within twenty hundred, twenty-five hundred feet of open space with walking trails. So instead of just providing access to the piece that we would give, which is roughly ten point five acres, there's a tremendous open space piece here, and smaller open space pieces here, that now we can connect to, because we control that property, it's undeveloped, it's beyond the parking area to the rink. So we, by changing our lot shape, it not only increases our lot area by one point four acres, but it also makes the connection to the open space, which is this very large track. That open space area is around twenty-seven acres.
So what's open space, would you?
Dedicated open space that is controlled by the Land Conservation Trust.
Okay, so that's current, that's currently controlled, that's current.
Behind Salem Street.
Yep.
Right, right. Okay, so, so it did two very important things for us. One is it connected us to other open space, but also, two, it connected, increased the lot area, which allowed us to have more acreage and more square footage per acre. The second thing it did was by eliminating some units, thirty to twenty-five, what we're able to do is create essentially a village green build to develop. So this would be a private road, it would not be a public road, and this geometry would not meet the standards for a public road. But nonetheless, the curvature of this road is sufficient for fire emergency act. But nonetheless, the curvature of this road is sufficient for fire emergency access, and this would be private, and there would be essentially a homeowners association. Again, all of this is in the text that we would be submitting. And in addition to this essentially seven point seven six acres in total, six point three nine and one point two seven, we would be setting aside lot B, which is ten point six more acres, of which roughly somewhere around forty percent of this land is upland and sixty percent is wetlands. Now, the oddity is, you wouldn't know that when you go up there, because if anyone ever drove out there, this access road, everything to the right of it does not look like a wetland. It's, it's a cultivated area, people seem to be farmers who are either mowing it, or the people that are using the airfield are mowing it. And the river itself is here, and it's a really, I don't know if anyone's been back there, but this muddy river that runs through here, it's, there's some really beautiful areas in here, because the canopy's open, and you can walk into this area, and hear the water running. So, the, the weapons mapping that we show here was taken from the mapping that was done for the improved ice rink, and it showed these lines, and that was some now fifteen years ago, like in nineteen eighty-eight. Okay, so, yeah, sixteen, almost seventeen years ago.
Where's the access, now how, how do you get?
There's a little bridge right here.
And how do you, like, now, people who go there, where do they park right now?
They just park all along here.
But they have to go through Firelight to get there, right?
Yeah, there's an easement to this property.
I just, okay. I thought you said it earlier, but I just wanted to make sure.
Just to clarify a couple of things, we went down this road before. The access is along the back of the building. When I say the back of the, it's the back of the building, through a parking lot. My concern before and now is the fact that if the town takes that property, there's a bridge that, over a river. Now, we'd have to bring that bridge up to state standards, and it's a substantial cost. So, I just want to-
Yeah, I remember.
The property in the back is beautiful.
Yeah.
The bridge, the bridge was-
There you go. I think you're getting too close to the other microphone up there.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
I think you could put the mic down, and we'd hear you.
Yeah. My, my concern was the bridge.
So, excellent, important. So, when Michael and Al spoke to the conservation trust folks, they indicated that if that land were to be dedicated, that there would be some consideration for perhaps a pedestrian bridge that could be properly built. The, the vehicle slash pedestrian bridge that's there now, I, I would agree with you. I wouldn't say that it should be open to the public, you know, without any investigation or study. But I think what the idea for this parcel is, is keep vehicles out of it, but get pedestrians to it, so there would be consideration of a brand-new pedestrian bridge crossing.
Also, what we were told is that if the trust, the land trust takes the property, then it's not a responsibility of the town, the bridge or the maintenance of the property. So, that's what, that's what we were told in that act.
I think so, I think you-
Yeah.
Okay, so, I, I don't think it's a good idea actually to bring cars over to that other side. It would actually be good if even the guys that are using it now parked over here and, and, you know, went there and used it. But they are driving over it, they park right here, and then they fly the hot lights.
Now, the entrance to the complex, you have to turn off of Clintonville into the-
Yeah.
Well, you're going to the hockey rink, correct?
Yep, so, no, so, for our development, we are having no access to the twenty-two, okay? What we are doing is proposing access opposite the drive through the Firelight as you come in the drive, the main drive.
Right, so making a left to a Firelight, you're gonna make a right into the complex?
Correct, correct. Opposite their, their front drive, okay? We, I know the state would immediately say to us, did you work with the town engineer? Did you talk to the town? Why are you having access out on the twenty-two when you have access off this town road? So, we didn't even, we didn't know. But what this also allows us to do is that there is a, a open, very shallow stormwater basin that was approved, that went with the ice rink, and what we would do is investigate the size of that and its capabilities, and we would expand it as needed, so that we could handle the impervious change runoff from our site. The R40 underlying zone has a thirty percent maximum impervious coverage for the lot, and we can respect that. So, that should be the mission. But the idea of this plan is, A, to reduce the density, but B, also to create a open space element that is different than these open spaces. And so, what we hope to do is submit a draft of the regulation. We'd like to come in, talk to staff again one more time. We'll find out soon when the attorney will be back working on this, and then our goal would be to make a formal application next time for this draft of regulation.
Yeah, my, the only concern I have, I mean, well, I'm not gonna say, it does time, is, like, for that comp, where it is, and, and the only reason why is, I've just been down there recently going to hockey games.
Yeah, yeah.
And, so, I mean, that's going from three o'clock in the afternoon to, I mean, I've been there, I think as late as ten-thirty, quarter of eleven, depending on what time the game starts or ends. So, I mean, what, how economically feasible are you gonna be able to sell those units based on that kind of traffic? You know, I mean, and it's, it's not just during the winter. Well, I mean, it's, it's year, it's a year-round facility, maybe it's a little less in other times of the year, but that would be a concern that I would have.
It's, it's largely a November to April business, okay?
Yep.
And during November to April, largely, it's weekday from about three o'clock on, and weekend-
Early in the morning.
Those are early mornings, starting at eight-
Yeah.
Going to probably Al's at ten, something like that, you know? So, we understand. So, yes, we, we know that that is a, something we have to pay attention to in marketing these units, but that's why we're not building large homes. These are, like I said, and if this commission said, well, we would prefer to have it age-restricted, then that's what we would do. We're really open to it. What we are going to do is, the goal is to have a master bedroom on the first floor and minimize the number of bedrooms to two, you know, maximize. So, we're not talking about large homes here, we're talking about a development footprint that we're showing on this is only forty by forty. So, and that includes a garage. So, and I just wanted to give you a flavor of, you know, this is just an example of, you know, these will be like either Cape-style homes, or they'll be like colonial-style homes, but they're not large footprints, single-car garage, and will be landscaped and maintained by a homeowners association in the overall town.
Now, as far as developing it, now, are you, would your plan B, or plan to, for this would be to construct all the homes at once, or are you gonna do them, would be doing them in sections, or?
Well, I, I think the way-
My question is, there is an extraordinary demand for the site brought, especially in the Northford, North Branford area, and, you know, we can start with probably a half dozen, and we expect to have those sold and build the entire site in a very, very short period of time, probably a year, year and a half. And the price point, just to add to that, the price point would be very, very reasonable, and I think that's gonna get people very attracted to it as well. John mentioned Cape, colonial, there'll be different styles of the home, so it's not gonna look like trap housing, there'll be different facades, different shingles, shape, clavering, et cetera.
And one thing, Emma, I just want to make a quick, remember, this is all served by public utilities, so there's water, sewer. Obviously, if this was septic, we wouldn't be able to propose something like this, but sewer, there is a fruit sewer main that's in Firelight, and Asbilt was actually drawn for that. There's water, there's gas here, and everything.
And it, it has a acceptable capacity?
That is a detail we haven't vetted out, but we will certainly, we'll be checking with her.
I mean, I would, I would say yes.
I just had a question. What's the land between-
Over here?
That whole area there?
It's just more industrial land, oh.
No, no, the one that's right up is the, where they do the airplanes.
All, all of this land here?
Yeah.
It's all wooded, and a lot of it is wetlands. The wetland line actually comes all the way to here. So, this area is not wetland, but this is wetland. I mean, the, that's a very good point. I mean, we're talking about ten and a half acres, but there's another six acres of wooded area that's all wetlands, that's adjacent to that area too, that can't be developed there.
Who owns that property?
They do.
Okay.
This is all owned right now by one owner.
Okay, Redwood says lot one, one point three seven acres, lot area adjustment?
Yeah.
Like, it looks like some roads back there?
Yeah, they're, they're not really roads, unfortunately, they're getting abused by ATV, you know, off-road vehicles.
Okay, oh, all right, all right, I got you.
So, that's what's going on, it's just-
I got you. Yep.
So, it's the ice rink, yes, in the winter, and that in summer, but they're also not charging for that either. But I think, Carrie, you, you may have only been here one week, but I think we had listened that the commission was concerned about this layout, okay? And I think one of the things that everybody said was, would you consider reducing some units? And we went back and talked about how that possibly work economically, and then also, how can we increase our land? And that's when we started thinking about the idea of, well, if we increase the land and make the connection to other open space, I think it would be really good for the plan.
So, that land, would that be protected through a conservation easement?
Yes, yes, exactly.
I got a question too, and basically, it's to Currie. Does the R40 rules apply?
Pardon me?
Would the R40 rules apply to this?
They would have to write new regs.
That's, that's what they would be proposing, a regulation like a, like a special use type regulation, with basically an overlay zone that was applied to this property, that's-
Just for the specific property?
Well, for anyone that, you know, if it were a regulation, then it'd be, you would have to come in site specifically and get it approved.
And let's hope it can be written, regulations can be written more general.
Right.
Yeah, and it, it is, it's not specific to the site. It basically talks about certain controls, like, you, in order, there's a couple, I could just go down a few. In other words, in order to do a development like this, you would have to have a minimum of fifteen acres.
Can you just walk us through this? Is it a high level of, can I see the R40 column? And then this SK-10, I assume is-
SK-10 in the mortgage warrant?
Yeah.
A SK-11? Yes, Carrie, great point. I didn't want to get into the minutia, but walking through, basically, what we tried to do is capture items that are either needed for this type of development, or already in the R40 bulk zoning, okay? And that's why I kind of show as a comparison what's in the R40 zone in that column, okay? And when I say NA, I say NA because in the R40 zone, it doesn't apply.
Correct.
Okay, so, not because they're, I'm, I'm just ignoring what's in the R40 zone. So, so, for instance, in order to do this type of development, you would have to have a minimum of five acres that is for your development footprint, your clustered development footprint. But you'd also have to have a minimum of fifteen acres when you combine your development footprint area and your open space footprint area. So, so, and these two pieces could be right next to each other, right? Often, you see clustered developments where all fifteen acres could be sitting here, but for purposes of staying out of wetlands, terrain, steep slopes, wherever it may be, the development is clustered. And often, you see a cluster where you'll see a road, you'll see a little short cul-de-sac, and you'll see housing, right? And then you'll see another technical housing, and that's a lot of cluster subdivisions were done that way.
About, about how big is each lot?
So, so, there's not a lot per se, but on here, each box is forty, it's a forty by forty building box, okay? So, you can see, we're not talking about a large house footprint, okay? So, that's, the box itself is sixteen hundred square feet, and in that is the garage space as well.
So, each individual house is sitting on a lot called, called, by any other name, it's a lot of forty feet by forty feet?
No, then there's area in between. So, each box, forty by forty, it's all spelled out here, has a twenty-foot separation between-
Okay, maybe I'm, I'm not-
It's a clustered development-
If I, if I came to you and I wanted to buy the first house in the first row-
It's not a lot.
It's not a lot.
They don't separate the lots.
It's a clustered open space development.
Like a condo?
Yes, they're twenty feet apart. There, there's other developments in town, townhomes and stuff that are twenty feet apart. But, so, the, the minimum distance off the private road is forty, it's all listed on this plan. I could go through all of that. The minimum distance between units is twenty. If there was an imaginary lot line between each unit, to your point, sir, that would be ten feet, side yard would be ten feet. But the R40 has a perimeter setback for its own zone, and we respect the front yard of fifty on Firelight, so that's a public road. We respect the fifty-foot front yard for Clintonville Road, we expect, we respect the fifty-foot side and the thirty-foot rear, because what we're doing here is, this is one development, but what I'm trying to show you is how we're respecting it as one clustered development. And then, I break down how it's, how it's affecting or what the coverages are per dwelling. So, when I talk about the acronym DP, that is development, that here is development parcel, and when I talk OSP, that's the open space parcel. So, so-
Can you just, I think this was a question that came up last time?
Yeah.
Differentiate between the minimum side unit setback and the separation between units?
Yeah, so, if there was an imaginary line, Carrie, that went between the units-
Uh-huh.
And I drew that line-
Yeah.
There would be a ten-foot setback on either side of that line, thus twenty feet minimum between.
Okay.
See what I'm saying?
Gotcha. And where does that forty-foot building kind of footprint?
That, that's, forty feet is, the twenty feet applies to that box, and we could only build inside that box.
Okay.
So, these homes that I showed you have to stay within that forty by forty box. There's insulation, so in some cases, it's gonna be twenty-five, or it's gonna be five feet in the box, so the distance between buildings could be thirty in some spots, right? But enough, the minimum is the twenty. So, and I understand, I, it's just, these are not lots, that's just the difference.
Yes, when somebody purchases, they're just purchasing the, they're not purchasing property, they're just purchasing the building.
That's right.
Or the structure.
And the, the land is all common, and that's why there's a homeowners association.
Exactly. So, plant unit development and homeowners will share the responsibility of the snow and the landscaping, and those common fees that the owners pay will go towards taking care of the common areas.
So, it's- So it's almost like, you know, we're, this is a really nice product because it's not attached single-family, it's detached single-family, but it's in the form of, as if this was townhomes and they were attached. We're just having them all individual units. So, you know, if you own a house that's in town and your kids are out of the house and you have a 3,000-square long hill, and you don't want to deal with all of the yard and all of that, and you don't want to leave town, here's an opportunity. Master bedroom on the first floor, a single-car garage, a garage space in the driveway, and a much smaller footprint. And then, everybody else, you just pay your fee and all the yard work is done by someone else.
So you mentioned a single-car garage, and then there'd be enough room for a secondary car?
Yeah, there's space inside the garage and a space outside the garage, not on the private street.
Now, how about parking for visitors?
Yeah, so what we've proposed in the regulation is for every three units, there's one visitor space. So under this plan, we've proposed 13 or 15 spaces. Under this plan, there was only 10. But we can easily add more parking. As you can see, with the lost units and with this open space park setting, we can easily use outdoor spaces.
Where are those spaces now?
There's seven here and six there.
Okay, what would the estimated common charges be?
We haven't, Michael, have you had a thought of what the estimated common charges for a place like this would be?
Not counting taxes, probably between $250 and $400.
That includes insurance on the road and the paving deposits for replacing the road and fire hydrants maintenance?
Yeah, I'm sure there's approvals for that, but yeah, I think that's...
It's not a very long road. We have similar projects up in Litchfield called Hunter's Chase, and that's what that is, a planned kind of development also, and we have an association there.
Did you write the regulations for that development?
No, we actually inherited it from Webster Bank.
Which we want to, give me a copy of those regulations.
Sure, yeah.
Go ahead, see, it's the website, www.hunter'schacect.com.
Okay.
Have you approached any of the local people across the street about changing the R-40 zone?
No, so, you know, we have not yet, but I will say this. These individuals went before, with an application, how long ago?
About 11 years ago. I joined, I was joining my wife, it was a select, she had suggested that she thought she might have that piece of property, so in 1993. And we had really no use for it, and no intention of developing it at the time. She thought we should propose the industrial change, the zone change. And we didn't get tired of it, but the meeting took up so much space, they had to move it to town, but all things were, and the general consensus was, what are you doing that you don't want to tell us about? And she dropped.
So with that said, we considered going the opposite direction. This is, I agree, we would consider changing this, the 6.4 acres. What we're saying now is that this is a single-family, detached residential, smaller lots across the street, because this is, these are older dwellings, okay? Then there's newer development near us, okay? Subdivision, one-acre zoning here, but this is a clustered condo development. So this was actually an approved clustered development, and it was approved because largely lots of wetlands, and there was an existing pond there. And these are attached though. What we're proposing is something similar to this, but detached. So there's a transition of product from here with this to the industrial use. There's really no market for large homes. It's just out of place next to this type of other uses in these zones and next to this residential. It's a, you know, as you know, a lot of these homes, unfortunately, they have to back out or drive right out onto Clintonville Road. They don't have the ability to come in a main drive and then be off the main road, so to say. We thank you for your time.
Anybody have any questions? Well, thank you very much for presentation.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your understanding.
That was your first week? Where did you start? All right. Carrie, are we...
You shouldn't have mentioned that.
Are we doing the next one?
Clearing them?
Okay, next order of business is, other business is discussion regarding potential zone change for 1015 Middletown Ave.
So I'll just, I'll go through this quickly. It's really just a discussion to get your initial read on this. This is in your packet. And what it is, is looking at, this is along Middletown Ave, along the North Haven Line. So as you'll see on the existing zoning map that I marked up, it shows the industrial zone and residential. And what I noticed is that the industrial zone kind of cuts through parcels that are being used as industrial, and sections of them are actually zoned residential. One potential expansion is, you know, looking at the expansion of the I-2, which is actually mentioned in the Plan of Conservation and Development. And how this all came about is the property owner at 1011, 1015 Middletown, which is kind of the driveway extends off of Middletown. This parcel with the white roof, the building with the white roof, that's right next to, so just to orient yourself, where I wrote B-1, that's Trailer Depot. The long driveway that goes back Warner Road, goes back to Fleet Image.
It's mislabeled.
Sorry, right.
Warner Road is in those on the case.
Okay. So that's actually just a long driveway, it's not Warner Road. And that goes back to Fleet Image, they repair trucks. And as you can see from the aerial image, they recently learned out, learned that they have been encroaching on the property at 1011 Middletown. So they inquired about possibly purchasing and expanding their parcel into kind of the hatched area that I marked on the potential expansion. But in doing a little bit of research, as I mentioned, I noticed that in the Plan of Conservation and Development, it shows this expansion of the I-2 zone, which really only makes sense because the parcels, I'm not sure why they were cut that way, if it was to provide a buffer. But the buildings themselves are actually partially in residential.
So the R-40 zone that's back here, this is all North Ranford Park?
Yes.
Okay.
This is, it goes on to Parsonage Hill Road?
Yep.
So I'm just raising it tonight, just kind of as, I don't know if you have any initial comments or feedback. It's yet to be seen if the property owner will actually come forward with a potential, you know, a proposed map change. I think any map change would be contingent upon him purchasing part of this residential property, and then also working with the abudders who own the industrial land to see if they would sign on as well.
Let me ask you a question. How did it get like this? I mean, is...
It may, from, you know, in talking with Kurt, it sounded like a lot of the zoning was zoned based around the usage. So it was zoned industrial because industrial property was there, so maybe that's where the businesses were, and then they expanded. I'm not sure how it...
I don't know the age of all those structures.
What's this white building right here?
But they've been there quite some time.
That's Fleet.
It's the Fleet guy that fixes up trucks.
Sorry?
I mean, I don't know the age of those structures when they were constructed, but they've been there for quite some time.
Okay, so it could have been pre-zoning?
That I don't know. I mean, it's been there for...
Because I thought, I thought a long time ago, somebody came in for something here, it was Fleet or whatever, but I don't remember it being part I-2 and part R-40, unless it's just so long ago I don't recall. Didn't we have somebody come in? But I don't remember this.
Well, and I expect that the, where I wrote I-2, that building, that terminal is now, it had been vacant for a little while, and now it's being occupied, and they're doing some work there. So I expect them to possibly, depending on the amount of work that they want to do, they may have to file a site plan. But again, it's, you know, an existing use that's just being reoccupied and kind of reinvigorated, but they've been talking about expansion, so...
So what would be our next steps if we wanted to, you know, make a change in this and make it, you know?
Well, the commission could take it on as our own application, if you wanted to kind of act on the Plan of Conservation and Development and make those change, or you could, like I say, wait for the property owner at 1015 Middletown to come before the commission and propose this along with the other abutting industrial properties. I just kind of wanted to get your initial read, if you thought that this wasn't a good idea, if you, if anyone had any historical knowledge of, this should have been done a while ago, I'm just not sure.
So that big building with the white roof is on residential property right now?
It's half on, half off.
It's on, well, residentially zoned area, it's not residential, it's their own property. It's residentially zoned.
They're not going to split that lot now?
I mean, we, if they don't take it up, we should take it up. If we take it up...
Well, then you have to get, these are two homes there, is that it?
Well, the...
Right now, is there homes on these two lots?
It's pools, right?
Yes.
So, in order to change it, these people would have to agree to it.
Anything outside of the property lines, absolutely.
Yep.
Anything outside of the parcel property.
Is this one big lot where the house is and the road out there? Warner Road properties is all one lot now?
No, the lot, that lot ends right behind that white-roofed building. It's at a diagonal. And what he's looking to do, because that residential property is actually for sale, he's looking to talk with them about purchasing a certain number of, you know, I don't know if it's up to an acre or so, to just kind of square off his property. And what I was recommending to him is that maybe rezone just a portion of it, but leave a buffer so that one section is still residential, or have some kind of an easement. Even by cutting the residential parcel, it would still leave that parcel in compliance, it wouldn't be under an acre by any means. So, I just wanted to get your initial read, and I can have the property owner come in and start to pursue this. And let him, actually more, just let him know what your initial feeling is.
Yeah, I think, I mean, if it's I-2 right now, and it's encroaching on the R-40, I mean, if we can square that up and make it so it's all on I-2...
At least align it with the existing property.
Exactly, I would, I would think that's probably the best bet. Now, whether we take that up or wait for his input, and if he can buy the property, I think it's probably what we want to do, but I mean, we've entertained the conversation for sure. You agree?
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Next, Town Planner's Report?
So, this evening, I passed out to everyone a packet which starts, it's dated February 5th, Planning and Zoning Notes Regarding 50 Fowler Road. So, quick overview of this. In this packet, in this cover page, I've kind of outlined a summary of what's been happening the past few weeks since the last meeting. The main thing is that I received a legal opinion from the town attorney regarding intervener status, so that's the second document in this packet. In summary, Attorney Jesmond, and my interpretation of this, is that Patrick Rowland, who was at previous meetings, had requested intervener status, which is the 22A-19 that he was citing. And so that allows for anyone to intervene in any proceeding, any administrative item, et cetera. Because we had 50 Fowler Road just as an update on the agenda, it wasn't clear to me that that was an actual proceeding. Based on Attorney Jesmond's interpretation, it sounds like it is. So as a result, Mr. Rowland will now be included in notifications, agendas, et cetera, for planning and zoning, and also wetlands. The limitation though is, you know, it's environmentally focused. So that's just kind of a very quick overview on the environmental intervener status. I've continued to talk with the applicant and property owner for the project at 50 Fowler Road just today. Also included in your packet, they submitted their stormwater registration to DEEP. So I just included a copy of some correspondence that they had, and also the cover sheet of their report. So that was just submitted to us, and then I'll check in with the state tomorrow, and definitely on Monday to see what the status is. And then also in your packet, I received today an appeal to the cease and desist. So I will be putting that on the agenda for the ZVA, so there's a copy of that letter, also a copy of the cease and desist. And then finally...
Where's the, that's why, I didn't see the, the...
Appeal?
Yeah, the appeal, yep. That's going to the ZVA, correct?
Yes.
Since we have seen it.
The last piece of paper is the letter that I sent to the property owner and applicant based on the wetlands agency's vote, which stated that they recommended that planning and zoning in the ZVA keeps the cease and desist in place until conditions are met. They also had concerns about the material on the site, I think I talked about this, but this is just a copy of the letter. So they inquired that the applicant landowner hire at their expense an independent qualified professional approved by the wetland agency to complete a site survey. So I've been in conversations with them, and they have apparently reached out to an engineer, but I don't have any knowledge of anyone being hired to date.
In their appeal, what are the, is, what are they stating their appeal on?
They just say that they're...
Just going to appeal?
They're saying that it's in compliance with all group permits. That's what their appeals said.
Okay, but we don't have all the permits.
No, like I say, just today, I received the stormwater registration submitted, but I haven't received anything from the state.
Right, okay. I just, yeah.
And...
Didn't they claim they had one?
Was that...
During the meeting, didn't they claim they already had one? Just misplaced it? Right?
Yeah, I mean, it was determined through a variety of means that they did not have it, by checking with the state, you know, looking on their website, subsequently talking with them, and talking with their engineer.
So they never had one? They never had one, or it expired?
We have no record of it, and the state doesn't either, so... So really, where things stand is, again, the cease and desist is being appealed, and just continuing to wait for correspondence from the applicants as far as proof that they're hiring an engineer to do the testing, and then also ensure that the erosion controls are in compliance, which was something that the cease and desist cited. Yeah, I don't know if you have any questions?
No, just, as things come up, let us know.
Okay.
Where we can, you know, apply or influence, we will.
Okay.
All right, applications received and scheduling?
No, just regular.
Okay.
I don't know.
Could I have the opportunity to...
Could I have the opportunity to speak for a moment? The intervener. I'll give this to you when I'm done, Carrie, so that you see. I brought this with me, it's a, I had made notes on it, but when I served to the certified copy, it did include the Planning and Zoning Commission as a CC copy to Michael Paulus. So if you need, I'll bring you a fresh copy, we'll, after I chat for a minute, I just wanted to read two or three of the items in here, and then...
Why don't you just email it to us?
Oh, okay.
But we had a question before the meeting started as to whether or not I had actually submitted, and Carrie included in her note as to whether or not I had, under step one, had presented as an intervener specifically to this agency as opposed to what, I just wanted to make sure that we had a copy of that before I actually spoke. And, you know, she does make a, a good point that I'm specifically concerned primarily with the environment, and that's where I get to actually speak to, it's not just the, the lack of a stormwater permit or the stormwater permit process, but the planning and zoning regulations contain a significant amount of information. It's not just a line or two, but it's a significant section on the soil and erosion control. And I think that that's an additional area where I've brought, not only in my additional correspondence, but in the photographs and the provided detail, some of what I need to do is provide sufficient information that it can be corroborated. But in doing that, I've provided the, the illegal dumping of, of construction debris. And I think it's important to know that, again, in the letter, that Town Regulations one ninety-nine dash three specifically define construction debris as pollution. And so where we have a construction debris and pollution, there's little doubt because under Town Regulations, we already call it pollution. So the question is, am I bringing information to the board, the zoning board and the planning and zoning, that specifically speaks to construction debris, which I have, bricks and asphalt and items of that nature? And so by its own regulation, it's not even a state board, which it happens to also file under state regulations, but the town of North Branford has specifically called out construction debris as pollution. So I think that that's a, a critical feature, and we'll, obviously, when I go to the zoning board of appeals, we'll follow that up. You don't really have an action to do from that. But I wanted to make sure that I, I was both on the record, not only in writing, but also as part of the minutes in the discussion of this. The second piece of it is, is that Cherry Hill has somehow intermingled into the activity on this particular property, Mungerbrook Associates, and a, some amalgamation of whether or not the corporation formerly known as Anderson Wilcox had a permit as the developer, but Cherry Hill has left leaves on the property, and they've supplied written documentation to Ms. Duquesne that they did in fact leave these leaves on the property. There's some fifty or a hundred thousand cubic yards of these leaves, and if I'm not mistaken, you saw them when you took a sidewalk. I thought you discussed the leaves in, in the last meeting.
I didn't, no. What I said was, there were, the only thing that I saw was, I think they brought in some material to mix with the existing soil, but there was no leaves that I saw.
But that's the compost, so that's the compost from the town of North Branford, I mean, from North Haven. And that's the part that is, again, forbidden, not only by the planning and zoning...
That's why, that's why they have Cease and Desist. So, I mean, everything that's been, I would deem part of Cease and Desist right now is, I mean...
Correct. And so that also speaks to the pollution piece as, as to whether or not.
Right.
And the third thing from the soil and erosion control aspect is that all of that needed to be covered, all of it needed to be covered by grass mats and things like that. So there's a whole series of host of issues that are specifically related to the soil and control erosion pieces. And so I just wanted to make sure that we had that reserved as well.
Yep.
Okay? I appreciate you guys taking a minute. And Carrie, I'll send this to you via email if you'd like, but I have this, I just wanted to make sure that you saw that I, that I properly filed with Michael. Thanks so much.
Anything else?
That's all.
Uh, our next meeting is what, so today's the fifth, so it'll be the nineteenth? Is there, anybody not gonna be here on the nineteenth? God willing, we'll all be here?
Yeah.
All right. All right, Charlie, it's all you.
I'm moving with her.
Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
See?